Gee, oh, how's his little daughter?
Little girl, doesn't that what Travis is... You think they have a little girl?
Mm-hmm.
Does she do it? Right. Yeah, she does. I think Travis left us all these days ago. That's the bike.
No. Hello, do you have yours, Mike?
Just Brian.
We don't even have that. I had this car. Molten.
Really?
Molten.
It's number twelve.
I don't want to hear that.
Alright, we're good.
Nope, so we did this.
Alright, call and meet your orders. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody in our audience. At our last meeting of two thousand eighteen, we will, at the end of this meeting, need to go into closed session for purposes of the evaluation of the superintendent. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Mr. Micah.
Just a celebration, it's a special time of the year. Everybody's having their Christmas and holiday parties in their classrooms, so everybody is excited about next week and the opportunity to have some downtime with family. And so our students are preparing for that. As I said at our last board meeting, we had a couple retirements, and so we're just thankful for Brenda Tisham. We had a retirement party for her yesterday and the work that she's done for the district and the many years of service that she's served here. Lorraine Ahern is here, and I'm gonna yield a little bit of my awards time to her. She wanted to say a few words.
I just want to say, Tony, thanks for doing a good job and filling my seat.
Thank you.
And, Ken? I don't want to cry.
Don't.
It's been fun. You know, you were my... We knocked on doors together, and that's where we got to know each other, and you were my only friend on the board, and I appreciated it. You were a good sounding board, and you had some good ideas, and thanks for your support, and just enjoy many successes.
Dead-on thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine. Is that for me?
That's it? Okay. With that, we have consent agenda. I would obtain a motion to approve.
Show move.
My support. Jessica, any comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Back to you, Ben.
Okay, I'd like to start by just echoing a bit of Lorraine's comments. I've...I know you'll have board comment at towards the end of the meeting, but I have appreciated greatly working with you, Ken, and you being a part of the board that was able to bring me here and give me this opportunity, and I've been very encouraged to see what this board's done in the last two years. And I appreciate just your support, you know, your perspective. We didn't always see eye to eye, but I think it was always respectful, and I think it was valued. And I appreciate that. And Tony, I just appreciate the different perspective that you bring as well, and it was an honor to serve with you, and I wish you all the best in all your new endeavors. I want to also just let everybody know that we have been having some conversations internally just about when we start looking at the budget, we start looking at student achievement data. Those are things that we regularly look at. One of the things that we're having some conversations about is the way that we deliver our elementary school model. And I want to start to just have you start thinking about it. There's no decisions that are needing to be made or anything like that. But we've been just dialoguing with our school improvement teams, talking with them about what is the best way to do this. We right now have five elementary schools. We deliver a K-five model. It's a very traditional structure. And so there are some really good things about that. One of the benefits of that, obviously, is having a community school, so you take an example of Cyrene Elementary School. It's right in the neighborhood where a lot of the people that are from that area geographically can get to. One of the challenges that we face, of course, is every year, we're trying to balance out classes. And in the fall, when I have a building that only has two teachers in a grade level, it's very difficult to balance those classes. So I might have twenty-two students in a second grade class in this building, and I might have thirty-two in this building over here, but because I don't have any room in either location to put them, I'm either taking kids out of that school that has more kids, but I can't balance them out because I only have two teachers at that particular school. So one of the benefits of looking at some things differently would be to say, well, how can we solve some of those problems? Also, from a financial side, it's probably the most costly model to run, what we're currently doing. And from a teacher collaboration and student learning side, there are some hindrances that we have. So if you think about how you would run a building, if you're running a K-five building, you have to try and come up with programming for all K-five students. If you're a teacher in third grade and you have one other colleague, you're collaborating with one or two other colleagues. You don't have the benefit of really working in teams of grade-level teams of more teachers. So we're not, obviously, at a point where we're asking any decisions to be made, but I do want you to be thinking about the possibility of looking at some different delivery models. Many places have gone to, it's a much more physically or fiscally responsible way to operate, have gone to like an upper elementary and early elementary model. And so what that looks like essentially is you look at your district geographically and you start to say, okay, how can we have an opportunity for children to go to an early elementary school where there's a team of teachers there who are specifically designed and programs designed specifically to children in K-one and two? Do a lot of your early childhood programming, a lot of literacy work in that type of a building. Whereas your upper elementary schools, three through five, are gearing up for middle school and preparing kids for middle school. So there's some interesting models like that. There are others as well. So I'm gonna be having that dialogue with you and asking you to discuss that at some board meetings coming up in the new year, just to kind of think through, what are the benefits? If we were to ever get to a point where we'd say we'd like to explore this further, there really needs to be a lot of community informational meetings. We need to get out there and let people weigh in on that, speak into that. I think we need to, you know, certainly listen to our parents and kind of what some of their wishes are. But I do think that there are opportunities to do things a little bit different. Doesn't mean that we have to, but we should always be looking at how we're operating and thinking, what would be best for kids first? Then what would be better for our budget financially as a district? And then also for teacher collaboration and those types of things? So, you know, it's just something that I'd like you to be thinking about a little bit. So, any of any questions on that?
Can I comment on that?
Sure.
Um, and I know you talked to Ross Sosowski, and Linden did that a couple years ago. It was done, I think, for two reasons. One, what you mentioned, the education and of having kids in the same building. But the other was, it was huge economically. And they went K-three, two buildings. They had three elementaries. They went K-three in two buildings and four, five in the other. And, you know, my daughter experienced the four or five building when she was in fifth grade. There was some things done differently that actually prepared them. Instead of having that one teacher in front of them all day, they actually did maybe what you do in middle school where you have different teachers. And so there was a moving of assignments in different phases throughout the day. And I do think it had some advantages. You know, I don't know how you... And it wasn't a great sell to the community at first, but they bought into it. But just from me experiencing it, I thought it went well. Now, I didn't see how it worked at the K-three buildings. I didn't have a kid there. But it is...I think it's much more efficient from the class sizes, too. Also, every fourth grade teacher is in the same building.
Right.
In the same hallway. Every fifth grade teacher is in the same building in the same hallway. So I think there's some real educational advantages there. You do create different... Their buildings are relatively close, so where you're gonna have a different issue is you're gonna have longer bus rides, maybe. That's something that you're gonna have a little different. Their elementary's all within probably a mile and a half each other.
Oh, okay.
But I think educationally, I think it's pretty neat. And it allows those kids to get a different... And when they did it, they moved everybody. Teachers moved, not one building principal moved a hundred yards to the other building. Just so that nobody would say, well, you got to stay in your building. I mean, they turned up apple cart upside down with teachers and administrators so that no one stayed put. And, but I thought it was pretty neat.
Yeah, and that's...I appreciate that. There's some really good things that can come from it. It may or may not be the right thing for us, but I think it's something that I want to explore. I think, I'm not doing my job if I don't bring you some different ideas on how to operate more efficiently and then also to try and stay ahead educationally. So it's just something to start thinking about. And as I said before, before we would be at any point where we'd be able to make a recommendation or a decision, we'd want to get a lot of input from the community on that.
Have you talked to any of the teachers? Or how are they...what are they expressing? What do they think about this?
So we haven't had big conversations about it. This is kind of the first... I mean, we've talked a little bit in our school improvement teams, and the idea has been surfaced. The teachers who are on that team get very excited about it because if you think about it, if you're a teacher and you're trying to, as Ken said, you're working on a project, and you just have one other person, you know, you're limited in kind of sharing the load and then also being able to do some things consistently. Well, if you're at Moorish and, you know, you have five teachers in the same grade level, well, now you can really do some pretty powerful stuff, and you can balance the kids across five teachers, and you can collaborate differently. And there are some teachers that are just born to be early elementary teachers. They excel there, they're really nurturing, they're good at teaching reading skills. And you have some that are saying, I would never want to be there. I want to be a fifth grade teacher and, you know, working on some of these things that prepare them for middle school. So I think, you know, it's... I think it will be met with mixed emotions, of course, because as Ken said, you know, not everybody stays put in that type of a scenario. But we always have to be thinking, you know, what's best for kids? What's best for the district? You know, the good side for parents is educationally, their kids are gonna have a very specific experience for them and programming done for kids of that age level. You know, but the challenge, of course, is, well, you know, I have a kid at this building in second grade, and I have a kid in this building in fourth grade, and, you know, that creates another transition. So that's not, for the parent, is convenient, obviously. You know, so, you know, just something to start kind of thinking about and, you know, over the course of the next few months, you know, really kind of talk through a little bit.
Is there any academic data from those districts that have done it already to say it's no bearing fruit from test?
Yeah, we're starting to look at that. I don't have anything hard evidence that I can give you right now, but that will be a part of the conversation to show, like, you know, this... These districts that have done this are showing gains in reading scores or, you know, the data that they're looking at. So, you know, I think that's something that will want to come. But, you know, we'll get everyone's perspective, certainly in the new year when we start talking about it. We'll have a couple new board members as well. And, you know, if everybody's perspective is, we don't really want to explore that, then, you know, that's fine. But I think if you're saying, hey, let's get some more data and do some more digging on it, then, you know, we'll start to look into it.
So how would you determine, like Ken's saying, they had K through three?
K-three and four.
Plus four, five. So is it based on enrollment? Or is it based on science?
Well, in our structure, I think the thing, you know, and it's premature. If I was drawing it up just on the conversations that we were having, we had talked about the potential of, say, Gaines Elementary School maintaining its current structure. Because Gaines is really set up well. It's efficient. We have one teacher per grade level. We have really a part-time administrator out there in Mrs. Preer, who does our MTSS stuff across the district. So from a structural standpoint, they're running efficiently. And for that community, it would be very difficult for the kids in Gaines to be able to get to another elementary school. So I think, from a programming side, they could do some innovative things because they're running kind of their own setup. But for the other four schools, they're almost set up, if you look at the district, like a four on a dice. So you could have an east and a west, if you will. And then the south side could be... South side elementary schools could be early elementary. The north side elementary schools could be upper elementary or vice versa. And then you're talking about possibly a K-two and then a three-five. There's other models, as Ken's mentioned, where you could, you know, try and bring kids more together into a four-five model. But there's a lot of different options there. If you were just looking at what would be most efficient from a transportation side and keeping people relatively close, you'd say, well, if Cyrene was K-two and Deke was three-five, you'd go, you know you're going to Cyrene for kindergarten through second grade, and then you're going to Deke through third through fifth grade, but you're staying on the west side of the district, if you will. Deke and Cyrene are similarly sized, so that makes sense. Moorish and Elms are similarly sized, so that makes sense. So again, we're just kind of thinking through, you know, what it might look like. So that's kind of just very preliminary information, but...
Thank you.
Any other questions on that? Alright, I have a couple other things to share during the finance report, and then I'm good to go.
Sure. So with that, let's go to your finance.
Finance committee met on Wednesday the twelfth to further discuss the audit report. The auditors provided a management letter, which you have a copy in your packets. It lists five matters that were discussed with management during the audit. And they are review of federal grant expenditures, internal control documents and procedures, child development center revenues and expenditures, use of sinking fund revenues and related expenditures, and government-wide financial statements and other post-employment benefits. There was an extensive discussion regarding these matters and the audit report itself. And then we...or I requested at the end, and I think we all agreed that next year, we'll have a pre-audit and a post-audit meeting with the finance committee. And at the post-audit, we would receive the audit report and the management letter and get it to the full board so the two have time to review it before they present at the board meeting, like they do. And that was agreed. We adjourned at 5:51 PM.
One thing, just to add to that, and you'll see it when you look through the documents, we had a shortfall in our CDC budget by about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. It's something that we're talking about internally. We've been talking about it for the last three or four months. But one of the things I wanted to just... Ken had called this week, and we talked a little bit about it. I talked with Mike as well. This isn't a hundred percent perfect, but I was asked, and I'm doing my best to try and deliver. We have a...I've pulled all of the account numbers from that fund so that you can see, you know, a little bit about where some of the shortfalls were. I'll pass this out to you. Here's one more.
You gave me two more.
Oh, sorry.
In case you need one to go that way.
Yep.
Good lord.
So anyway, I apologize for the size of the font. I could have probably made that a little bit bigger. You'll notice on the far right side, Chris and I went through this, and we have some notes on there. I'd be happy to answer questions about those at some point. Essentially, what we're dealing with is we were over-budget on salaries and benefits primarily. We've already curtailed a lot of that spending, but it's something that we're looking very closely at. You'll be able to see also when the budget for this particular program was built. There were a couple things that should have not been budgeted there. There was also maybe not enough budgeted there in certain funds. But you'll be able to see the revenue side on that top section. You'll see the expenditures on the bottom section, and then you'll see the loss there on the bottom. So we have...we've had some work to do since school started this year and just the structure that we're in. We have some things that we need to continue to look at, but we cannot bring that much of a shortfall in on this fund again. So it's something that we're monitoring, and I'll be able to provide you some insights into it if you guys have questions at some point as well.
I have one real quick comment.
Sure.
I'm not even gonna comment on this because it's something that the new board will have to start addressing in January. Thank you. I will take a peek at that. And I might call and talk to you about it, but I'm not gonna discuss here. The one thing I will ask this board to do is get rid of the company that did our audit this year. That man, I can't remember his name, very not...very polite, but they came to our first meeting unprepared, and they told us they were unprepared when they came here. So we had a second meeting that they should have come prepared. He didn't even bring a copy to audit. Now, when you're getting paid to do an audit and talk about an audit and do a presentation on an audit that you had prepared, and you didn't even bring a copy of it? He got up twice to look at mine? I have no idea why you would keep them around. And I'm gonna pick on Chris a little bit. I know she's new, and I think she's done a wonderful job so far. She's very forthcoming, gave good answers. But Chris didn't bring a copy to audit. And that's something that I...when I talked to Ben, I said, you need to address that. Your financial person come to do an audit and didn't bring a copy of it. But that company, if you guys bring them back here next year, shame on you. Because when someone comes out unprepared, I don't know why we would do business with them, whether they did a good job or a bad job. You know, if you think that's okay and you go that unprepared to work every day, then I guess you have a great boss or a tolerant one. But that man come, and he sat right where Jessica's at, and it didn't even have a copy of the audit. And I was dumbfounded. And I'll leave it at that.
Any other questions for Ben? Or Mike? Okay. We did have two other meetings this week. We had academic achievement. Daniel Nolan and Rod talked about... Oh, actually, Jim Kitchen. Talked about new high school courses that are coming that we'll see in January. But they're renaming and reconfiguring some of them, and I don't know the full name of one of them, but it's...they included it's a programming class, basically, and they included in the title, "Endgame Design." Which I think will probably be very attractive. And they also shared with us some plans for Project Lead the Way where kids would be able to choose a track. And this is the beginning stages of, as they described it, maybe five years out. Where kids would be able to choose a track. So let's say you want to go into some kind of engineering, you would choose that track, and you would track through. And when you're done, you would likely be able to earn a STEM endorsement on your diploma. That's now available. And there's also an opportunity to have a bilingual endorsement on your diploma if you've taken all of the foreign language classes. But this is the preliminary stages. It's really exciting. And then they talked about early college, which is really exciting, which would allow kids to be enrolled in a college. This is...we've applied for it. We don't have HUL yet with the Michigan Department of Education. And if we get approval, we would have students that could enroll in it. They would have access to some online classes as well. They do have to finish in their last year a math class.
With their thirteenth year.
Yeah, their thirteenth year. So it's a five-year, basically five. They would be able to walk with their class that they anticipated graduating with. They just won't get their diploma until after they're finished with their fifth year, and they would end up with up to, get this, sixty credits of college education. So there's a significant opportunity for students and their parents who are interested in maybe saving a little bit of money and getting their kids a jumpstart. It's really, really exciting. Ben, what else did we talk about?
So the pathway idea, which you did a good job explaining, is how do we create an opportunity for kids in Swartz Creek to have an advantage over kids that graduate from other high schools? And we need to try and... You can't do everything and be everything to everyone. And so we talked about with this STEM work that we're doing, K-five right now, that's very strong. With the bond passage, we're gonna be doing some of that technology and infrastructure at the middle and high school. We could create an entire track for engineering and IT and computer technology where kids could actually go through that program Where kids could actually go through the, that program and have a specialized diploma. The, when they graduate, they'll have college credit, they'll have some other pieces and when they step into a Kettering or U of M Flynn or wherever. They will just have so much more math, science, engineering skills than the kid that just graduated from normal high school. So, um, and then there's an endorsement that the state would even offer on a diploma, so we're trying to really lead the way in that. Um, and trying to find out how our kids that graduate here will have something special. Um, or have the opportunity to get something that sets them above.
They, they even talked about, um, having a, a network of professionals in that field that they could. Learn from or meet or be mentored by and, I mean, it's really exciting, so. Kudos to you and your team because, um, this is very forward thinking.
Yeah, we're trying to get ahead of it, so it'd be, be fun if we can pull it off.
Hey, I got a comment. I, I think this pathway thing is great, I think it's a good idea. But I asked you about the percentage of, of graduates go, uh, into the trades and. Go to STEM route. I, I think all the emphasis we're putting on STEM is good. But I, I would hope that as much effort gets put into stressing about the trades. And that the kids that go that route, they aren't being left behind. I mean, we shouldn't just be pushing STEM. Because there's a whole lot of students out there that aren't gonna go that route.
Yeah, well, it's, that's a really good point and so the nice thing about this pathway is that. What we're trying to push for all kids is post-high school credit or post-high school credential. You don't have to go to college, most, uh, uh, some of our, a lot of our kids don't go to college, we have a shortage in the trades. But if you're not graduating with a skill, regardless of whether you wanna go on to be a, a carpenter or whatever. You're just not gonna be able to make it and so what we're trying to do is say, let's teach you, instead of you sitting in calculus class. Let's teach you how to do geometric figures with a square on a roof. Let's teach you how to actually do this, so the STEM pathway would allow for kids that. You're gonna have some kids that are gonna wa- go on to engineering college degrees, you're gonna have some kids that wanna just be. Uh, they wanna own their construction management company, so we get them set up so that they can get into a, a, a training program. That's maybe one year after high school, so that they have something where, you know, yeah, they might be able to make twenty dollars an hour being a laborer. But they can make twenty-five dollars an hour being a foreman with the potential to make fifty dollars an hour, you know, so giving them. A skill that they can go in and do that, but we have to have people in the trades and that's what actually it lends very nicely to. It doesn't matter if you're a college-bound kid or you're going right into carpentry. Uh, we had a kid just, uh, last year, he was a GCI graduate. Um, he graduated from our high school, went to GCI in the welding program. He's making six figures as a nineteen-year-old welding underwater for a Texas oil company. And he, he, only reason he was hired to do that is because he had the welding, uh, course here that we, he took from going to GCI, so. Um, we are absolutely big in, into the trades and I think we need to be in this area, so I appreciate that comment.
Good, thank you.
And then we had our policy meeting and we reviewed all the policies. That everybody will see again in January. And Ben did a very nice job as usual summarizing them and pointing out areas that are changing. And that we probably need to give some consideration to, so we will see them again. Um, I think that was pretty much it. Okay, alright. Now, we have informational items, I don't think there were any questions for follow-up. And most non-certified staff at this time, the board discussion items, we have the cage contract discussion.
Um, in your board packets, you have a copy of the current rental agreement with Cage Sports and our school district. Um, the contract is, uh, ending this year in June. And so, um, I've been having some conversations with, uh, some of you, I know, uh, Mike has had some conversations. Uh, Mike had presented a, a good rationale or explanation, um, kind of on his thoughts about it. We wanted to have our first conversation about our relationship with Cage Sports and how. That, um, contract should be handled moving forward. Whether we wanna continue that relationship, whether we wanna change that relationship or whether we wanna be done with that relationship. I have, uh, reached out to the, um, owners. And, um, I have requested, I said, I do believe, um, one of the conversations that we're gonna have is to be able to see. You know, your financial documents, your, um, you know, what, what it is you're bringing in and, and ta- putting out. Um, I have not heard back from them on that request yet. Um, but I think that, uh, I'm gonna be very intrigued by the conversation of the board and kinda how. You would like me to proceed or some suggestions on how I would proceed. Um, we don't have to make a decision tonight, but I think we should start having some conversations about what our options are. Um, I'll weigh in at different points if you have questions, but I'll let you as a board kinda talk through that and. Mike, I know you prepared a document, I don't know if all the board members got that, but I think they did, so, um, if you wanna start the conversation.
Sure, I gave everybody a copy last time. Cage talking point is at the top, if you don't have it. If you, if you do have it, if you go to the second paragraph, this kind of in a nutshell. Explains my position. I, I just read, this, this is school district home community center meant for our students in our community. It was not purchased to generate revenue, should be available to be utilized by our students and community on the weekends. Weekend wear and tear, cost of utilities and maintenance, the annual loan payment are not covered by the seven, eight thousand dollar yearly rent. I know that the argument of to keep the contract is a seventy-eight thousand dollars or whatever. If, if we increase that, and can we afford not to take that money in? And that's a good argument and I agree with that. But I think this board has gotta make the decision of what's best for our students and what's best for our community. Every weekend, that lot is full and them, them basketball players are from all over the state. And they are people, they are students that are gonna come here, we're not gonna draw, I bet we're not gonna draw one person out of those teams. I just think it's time to break that, break that, uh, agreement off and not rela it, I just. And if, if we're, if we're that worried about the money, then. Apparently, although there's some news today in the paper about nonprofits and. Their, uh, charities, which I don't know enough about nonprofits. I don't know if this fits that, but I do know that a nonprofit has to file with the IRS every year. A financial report, it's called a Form nine ninety, that's public record and they have to, they have to provide that. If they don't provide that, then they're jeopardizing their. Tax exempt position. And if, if the majority of the board wants to keep it, I still want to see that financial report. Or I want an explanation why we can't see it.
What does it cost to run, maintain the cage, keep lights on, water? Um, you know, I, that's a good question, um, something that I don't have a solid answer, I can find that information out. One thing I will tell you, um. The, the wear and tear on the facility, of course, is significant when you have that many people coming through. Uh, one of the things we looked at just recently and it was a part of the s- Bond Scope was the, was the parking lot there, I mean, you got, you know. Parking lot with big holes there, um, that obviously is lessened when you don't have as much traffic on it, so. Um, in terms of heating, cooling, uh, those types of things, I will try and dig those costs out, uh, you know, and get you that, that would be helpful.
And I had a conversation with a individual that owns a cage-type facility in another state, close to Michigan. He's been to our facility also. Our facility is set up better than his facility. When he rents his facility out on the weekends for basketball tournaments, just basketball tournaments. He brings in five thousand dollars is what he rents his facility out, plus concessions.
On the weekend?
On the weekend.
So they get the concession take?
Yes, they get the concessions. And the people who are running the tournament get the ticket sales and the fee. After I spoke to you today, can you go back to him and ask him what, how many teams that is, what they're paying? You know, what?
No, yes, he, I, call with any question, he said, call with any questions we have.
It would be interesting to see what, you know, I, just for a fun number, ten teams versus twenty teams. You know, uh, fees being two, you know, two hundred dollars to four hundred dollars, I, I wanna make sure. Not doubting his numbers, but make sure we're comparing apples and oranges when you're talking about that.
Right, no, he said, call with any question, he made money off of weightlifting tournaments. If he's not making money on that facility, he'd rather make a hundred dollars and have it sit empty. He's had amateur MMA come in there and fight. Anything, it, it, it's a beautiful facility, they're using it.
What is the population of where he's at?
Equivalent to Schwartz Creek, he's, I think, uh, hour and a half outside of Indianapolis.
Okay, so he's, so he's near though, a very populated area where we're not.
Metro Detroit, we're hour and a half from Metro Detroit.
No one's gonna leave Metro Detroit to come here. No one's gonna leave Metro Detroit, there's too many stops along the way. You're, you're, you're not gonna drive by all the stops along the way to come here, I mean, I bet.
We're an hour and a half from Grand Rapids, Lansing, Saginaw Bay City, Midland.
Well, where are the teams coming from now?
Saginaw, Duran, Flint, outside even further.
Oh, yeah, further than that, the basketball team. I'm talking about, I'm talking about if you're gonna, if, if you were gonna hold an MMA event, where would you go? Prizes or the cage?
I just threw that out there, that's just.
Right, but I, I'm saying those is, let's stick to what that is, that's four basketball courts. It's only got a, it's only got a seating capacity of, it's like six fifty?
See, his doesn't have it, all he has is a balcony, like the Blue Line Club.
But I mean, but what I'm saying is, 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 we're limited on how many people can go in there, I, I, and don't hold me to six fifty. I think it's even less than that.
They've had wrestling tournaments, volleyball tournaments?
We could never hold a wrestling tournament there because we violate fire code, we discussed that back years ago when Hall was here. You'd violate fire code unless you wanna knock holes and put more doors in. Cause, cause what, what goes into that gym, you can't put in there. You know, you can put fifteen hundred in our gymnasium, you can't put fifteen hundred in there because you're violating fire code. So, I mean, there, there's, there's one of the hurdles that I, I, I would be curious that he has compared to what we have. You know, cause I mean, that'd be ideal place to have a wrestling tournament, except you can't put all the mommies and daddies in there. You know, I mean, you could, you could, you got staging areas, you could probably set up three or four mats on each basketball court, you could run a great wrestling tournament. Problem of it is, you couldn't get all the parents in there. So, I mean, you know, those would be my questions there and just make sure that some of it is apples and apples, you know, but.
Mike, is, is your concern that we should not make it a revenue generating facility or that it should be and we just try to increase the revenue or what's the?
I don't care if we do or not, if, if that's the point, if we want to make revenue. Then we need to look at what's the possibility. And, and if we do do that, we're gonna slide back in it, we're gonna pay property taxes because that's why they went to the nonprofit. Because when they sold it to us, then they started running their tournaments and then we started paying property taxes. So they went out and they became a nonprofit.
The, the city, the city of Schwartz Creek.
They're, they're still running the same thing they were running before. But they're run as a nonprofit.
I'm not saying we take it over.
I do too.
I'm, if, if we do decide to stay with them, I think we need to negotiate a higher price.
I would agree with that.
If we decide to go with them.
I think Mike has said something before and you started out with this about it being there for the kids. And ideally, ultimately at some point, yes, it would like, I would love to see that where it's. All the time available for the students in our community and for the community as a type of community center. I think that's what you've said every time that you've brought this up and that's what is important. And ideally at some point, if we can get there and it's fiscally responsible for us to be able to do that, absolutely. But I think that we get, try to do it incrementally getting there, you know, of maybe cutting back some of the weekends of availability. Of looking at what's reasonable for us to increase the rent to and maybe looking at two or three years. How many years down the road, I don't think, probably next year, but I think it would be. I would be more comfortable with it incrementally getting to that point rather than giving up a minimum of what, eighty thousand? A year, whatever. I don't think as a, as, as a district right now that we can financially afford to take that off the table completely. And then increase our costs because it, the theory that you have is that we're gonna have it even busier all the time. With people from our community, we're still gonna have wear and tear then on the building, we're just not doing anything to truly defray the cost. Or we're not gonna defray the cost that much.
Why did we buy the cage? We bought the cage because we needed the room. And bam, right off the bat, we're giving it back to them, they're still running their tournaments. I, I disagree.
Do we?
I don't wanna say that I don't care about the money, I do care about the money. But to me, the students in our community are more important than that right now.
Do we have anybody that wants in there? And what, since we're talking about kids, do we have anyone that even wants in there on the weekends?
I, I know some.
Okay, well, but I mean, who, what, what is it? I, I'm curious, cause I don't know.
Mike's got less.
Oh, okay, well, share it, cause, I mean.
My son, he, he doesn't go every Sunday, in fact, he misses a lot of them. But there's a group of people that go to the high school every Sunday morning and they play basketball. And a lot of them are, are students. And they pay a dollar, just like they used to pay a dollar to walk in the cage. They have to pay a dollar to community, uh, to play at the high school on Sunday morning. I know they'd love to go to the cage. I, I, and that's just.
But, but I mean, do they, but my question would be is, do they need it?
Do they need it?
If they're playing already on Sunday in the high school, do they need the cage?
Not as long, not as long as they're allowed to go in that, in that gym.
Right, and I mean, you know, I mean, and there's, the hu- the middle school's got a gym as well. I, 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 I would like to know is, a- again, this, and, and no, we don't need to make any decision tonight. Cause Tony and I don't have to live with it, so I don't wanna be part of any decision, I gotta walk out of the room. But do we have anybody that we knowingly reject that are students on the weekends from anything?
No, but it's also not been available, so if people knew that it was available, would they?
No, 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 let's timeout, not people, students.
Right, right.
And, and I would be more interested in current students, if we're gonna make this student-driven, cause that's the argument. What would, why don't we poll our coaches that would reasonably use that? Would you use it on a weekend, what would you use it for and is there any other facility that would work?
Ask Scotty Wright. Ask Scotty Wright if kids who go up there, I guarantee you, kids who go up.
I, I, I'd say we could, we could run basketball tournaments, we could play six games in Schwartz Creek. We could use middle school, high school and four games at the cage, we could hold huge high school tournaments, volleyball tournaments.
Here's, volleyball, no, volleyball never worked, we've already looked into that one, that one don't even exist around here and no, no one does volleyball. Here, here's the problem we ran into earlier.
School sport, not youth.
Right, but you only have a, you only have a, a brief window of doing that and again, Tony, we come to capacity. There, there, there becomes an issue of numbers in there. When we, when we did this under Jeff and you, you two I know can correct me if I'm wrong. One of the hurdles that we have with this, why does community ed operate in the red every year? Because we pay somebody to run it, we pay for them to have their own secretary. That place isn't gonna run itself. So right out of the gate, you lost seventy thousand dollars. And let's just say for funds, you have, look at the fiasco when we had Craig Martin run that. Right out of the gate, you're paying Craig Martin sixty-two thousand dollars plus a benefit package. You were eighty-plus thousand dollars in the hole before you ever sold a ticket. And that was just Craig Martin, that wasn't anyone else, you were in the hole eighty grand, day one. So this place isn't gonna run itself, someone's gonna have to run it, someone's gonna have to manage it, someone's gonna have to set all these things up. What are you gonna pay that person?
I, I got an idea. I think it should be athletic department.
I'm not even gonna comment on that, she hardly run the athletic department.
I'm just saying, it's an athletic facility.
I, I agree, she can hardly ath- he's hardly run the athletic department, so just.
So Ben, how, how do we, how do we determine, um, given the length of time that we've had those, um, tournaments there? Whether there is interest in a, a weekend?
Well, we could start, I mean, we could start to get some surveys out, you know, to see if that would be an interest, I can tell you one thing we've done. Uh, we ran the high school homecoming dance there this year, um, and it was wildly successful. Um, I think it was mainly because they had air there and they don't. But, uh, they, um, they ran it at the cage, I had a chance to see it, it was decorated beautifully, um. Meyer was a good partner, they let us park over there and drive over and shuttle kids over. Um, so I know that there are pla- opportunities like that, that may not be available right now. Because if we wanted to use it for a dance, it wouldn't be available for, on a date that, that it's used.
You'd have to block it off.
You'd have to block it off, so the question, you know, might be kind of a conversation about. You know, maybe we wanna start gearing towards maybe looking at not a long-term deal, maybe a shorter term with the ideas. Mike and Jessica have said of getting it more to a Schwartz Creek student facility, but doing it in a way where you're not, you know. If we don't have the capacity, I mean, I certainly, um, don't have time in my day to run that and, you know, I don't know. Where the capacity is gonna come for it, I'm sure that there's people out there that do and we probably could do it, but we would just have to put some models together, so. Um, you know, it might be an opportunity to say, okay, we need to, we need to get a little bit more, uh, this year and we'll do a one-year deal. And see how it goes, if we can lock off some weekends and maybe get a few more dates, um.
Well, how many weekends they have it, I believe it's forty?
Yeah, they have it, so.
I'm guessing.
Every weekend in June.
Ninety-four days.
Yeah, ninety-four days of the year, so.
Eight hundred and fifty dollars, seventy-eight thousand.
Most.
Ninety-four days.
Most of the weekends in the year, they have it.
Right, I, I, I understand, that's why I'm asking, how many weekends is it?
If you, I'm sorry, I don't, it's this document right here.
Okay, oh, okay, so there's.
I'm sorry, ninety-three days.
If you look at like July, they have one, two, three, four days in July, so it's, July is the smallest month, but. You know, in June, they have it for the entire month, so, you know.
In reality, we're not here.
And down here, the, uh, you got a lot of, you got one, two, three, four, five eights and a ten and a nine.
I, I guess, I, I guess my two cents out it would be, poll your coaches and see, not do they want it, do they need it? Because besides minus basketball, I don't know who, uh, basketball, Poms and Shear I know run out of there, or did.
Yeah, they do.
Okay, those are, those are things I know that run out of there. Um, we've never done the floor for volleyball and I don't think you'd need to, you got one volleyball team that's got the gym all to themselves during volleyball season. So I can't imagine why you'd need to do anything with it for just our team. Um, but yeah, when, when back when Jeff was here, and that was one of the things Jeff found and I mean, I agree with him and Jeff and I didn't agree on that much. But it was the managing of it, you were gonna pay someone to run it. And then you were gonna pay someone to be there if you're doing things on the weekend, that person's gotta be there on the weekend, so was it a week job or is it a weekend job? And, and then the other is, you know, who is actually going to occupy it? You know, uh, do, would our kids be there every weekend? Cause, cause if the argument is our kids using it, I don't have an argument at all, boot them out. But I don't know that that's necessarily what's gonna happen. And if there's a weekend we need it, it, let's, let's put it, let's put it in writing, we need to give them X amount of notice. You know, that, that if we give them three months' notice that we need it for a particular weekend or a Friday night to do a dance, it's ours. And if we can't give three months' notice, then the people running this district maybe ought to get it together and plan a little bit in advance. I mean, something of that nature, but I, I, I totally agree with Jessica for the fact that. We already have things operating in the red and, and community ed has been a pet peeve of mine since day one. All you're doing is creating another community ed, except you're giving it another name. So if you want something else to operate in the red, feel free, I think it probably already is, even with them renting it. Might, and throw the payment out the window, we know the payment's gonna make it operating to red, but just offsetting the bills and everything. I mean, that'd be, that would be my thing, but I, I would like to know who's not getting in there that would like in there. That would, I think that's you guys' biggest question.
And it, this isn't, this isn't private business. This is tax money. Taxpayers in this community are paying for that building.
Yep.
We aren't trying to make a profit.
No, I, I wouldn't say not try to make a profit, but why do we charge people to use our building when they do community ed things there? If you come in and do a karate school, a community ed, why do we charge them? Big, cause they're using our facility.
And to pay for the instructor. And what, pay for the instructor?
Correct, but you're, you're paying to use the building, go look at, go look at what we charge.
I agree.
Go look at what we charge people to use a building, it's like a hundred dollars a visit. We don't give buildings away anymore. If, if you'd wanna, if you wanna, go, go look at our policies on what it costs to go use an elementary school gym. But yet, we're gonna talk about over here that someone's paying a seventy grand a year to use it. But yet, our own people, for our own students, are paying money to do stuff in our facilities. And it's not the ten dollars an hour that a custodian makes. Well, we gotta pay for a custodian, really? They make ten bucks an hour.
No, I thought you were talking about community ed, why do they charge what they do?
Well, I know what they charge, but I mean, you know, we, we charge, we charge for swimming lessons, we charge for everything. You know, obviously, we're not doing something right because we're operating in the, in the red. I have to hear how wonderful pickleball is, what does pickleball make? If, again, if we wanna do stuff for the community, that's fine, our job is to educate K-12 students, that's our job. It's not whether a, a bunch of senior citizens can come play pickleball. That's really not on our agenda, it's nice, and, and it's nice we're part of the public. But if I have to cut community ed and get rid of pickleball so I can hire another teacher. And not be seventy-six thousand dollars in the red, then maybe that's what we should do.
Why are we trying to make that a community center then? Why don't we just not make it a community center?
I wouldn't.
You would?
I wouldn't.
Oh, you wouldn't.
If I had my way, we'd get rid of community ed tomorrow. It's, there's no purpose educating K-12 students. It's a rainbow and unicorn thing for the public, and it's nice we have it, I think it's great.
Do we need the cage? If we don't, we should sell it.
I don't know that we need the cage, I think it makes things operate better for the students during basketball season. There's my honest answer. Do we need anything? No, cuz we operated the same basketball program before we bought it. It's just kids getting home till whatever it was, nine-thirty or ten o'clock at night. So, does it make it better? The only thing that, the only, this all come about when they move girls' basketball season. I mean, that, that, that made the cage almost a necessary evil. Because you had between games, practices, and the girls and the boys having the same season, one building didn't do it. If you'd have come over where I went to high school, they put up two walls, and you had three full-size gyms at one central, you wouldn't have needed the cage. You know, but we don't have that luxury of putting up two walls, we have one basketball court, two if you go over here.
Hey, if we, if we'd have built a practice facility.
Yep.
Which I said you could have built for, I know you could have built one for two and a half million dollars. And it could have been right on this campus, and it could have been used during the day by our students, instead, we buy the cage.
I, I, if you were in my opinion on buying the cage, we should have never bought it. That, that's my opinion on that, but, but we've got it now, and it's almost paid for.
How much you owe on it?
Well, we have two more ye- or three more years of payments?
Twenty-one, I thought.
Five hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars.
Okay, so, four more years of pay, no, three, three. Three more years of payment, so, in three more years, now what? It's, you got it. I mean, I, you know, me and St- me and Studer go round and round about this topic, cuz Chris has always wanted to unload it. And I feel like we're, we're so deep in it, it doesn't matter, we just disagree on it. And that's, and I mean, that's the same thing here, you're three years from having it paid off, eat it for another three years and be done with it. But I, I, again, I think you need to find out who really wants it and needs it, that's not having access to it. And what is it gonna cost to have someone quote-unquote manage it and operate it? You know? And, and you need to find out the seating capacity of it, because that number is huge. Cuz you're not gonna hold a bunch of stuff in there, cuz you can't put anyone in it.
I think we should probably do some of the benchmarking that you're talking about, Tony. Compared to what other facilities that are similar are getting in terms of their, their rentals.
I agree with that one.
Or use, um, that might give us some leverage in any kind of discussions we may have.
Cuz as I told Tony today at the gym, the last time they showed us their money, they cooked the books, there's no, they were showing they were losing money. Well, unless, unless, I, I know two of the three might need a tax write-off there, but the other one don't. You know, but they, they literally, what they gave us was showing they lost money, and you two were here for that. And they're not, no one's doing that for funsies on the weekend. That, that's, I'm not buying that, they're making money. But, I mean, I, you know, I, I guess the question would be is, get on their, get on their website, you can get on their website and see what they charge. For a team to come in there and play.
Four to six hundred dollars.
Yep, it's big numbers, and then they pay per, they pay referees and.
They pay five dollars for the person that walks in that door.
Yeah, they're making money, I, I'm not arguing that.
Parking lot's filled every weekend.
Yep. I'm with Tony on charging them more money.
Well, I can start to dig into, uh, some of these questions, and then we can continue the dialogue. I think we're gonna need to, um, probably talk about it again in January and February, because I'm gonna need to sit down with them. You know, so, think about it, ponder it, and, um, I'll definitely come back with some different information.
If there's usage that we should be getting of it, we're not, I don't see how we can go with them.
I just think, I just think you have to be careful, it, depending on what route you wanna take, someone better research that really well, because. And I, and I'm, I'm not picking on the person, cuz they could have hired Ken Engel to run the pack, okay? Just so happened they hired a guy named Craig Martin, I'm not picking on Craig. You're gonna have to, someone might manage it, and I agree with Jessica, you can't have another thing operating in the red here. Because all that money comes out of the general fund, and all that money hires teachers. And our job is to educate kids, not make rainbows and unicorns for anyone that, you know, I mean, it's like pickleball. Go look at the addresses of the people that show up for pickleball. Few, few to none are from Swartz Creek. You know, just like the basketball tournaments, those aren't Swartz Creek residents, well, neither is pickleball, but we have pickleball. So, you know, just, you, you know, don't, don't, please don't have something else operating in the red. I, that's where Jessica and I, I agreed with everything she said.
Well, you might not disagree, well, it sounds like you'll disagree, cuz I think community ed is really important. And I think to have that, the community enrichment is just a matter of how we are financially responsible paying for it. You know, I, the point I get that we are not a nonprofit, is a government, governmental entity. And we're not making profits, yet we can cover our costs, and we should try to do our best to do that. So, there, both things happen there, I mean, we do community ed, and the people that run some of the community ed programs. They're making a profit as well, you know, the instructor, the individual instructor is making a profit. The difference just is, the, the volume and the quantity. We're not telling the instructors of any other community ed program that they have to do that for free. Or that they have to do it at a reduced rate. I mean, we just need to do something that's, I think, a little more equitable for our district. Than what we have been doing, and not push somebody out right away. Cuz I think it, I think it is an asset to our community, it's what draws people into our community in those different programs. My girls both went through the swim program, and it was important, you know, they.
Swimming's one of the few I'd keep.
So, I think there's a great, there's a great benefit to that, and growing up, I did volleyball, actually, in, at our local, uh, elementary. With my mom and my aunt, I, those are great memories that I still have, you know, like. I would like to see something like that in our elementary schools, maybe one day, I know things have changed a lot. But, you know, to open up our schools for, um, evening activities for the people in that area, I think. Are very beneficial, and it builds community, and it helps us to know our neighbors better, the ones that don't live right down the street from us.
And, and we haven't even talked about it, I know you, you're talking about not being a community center, but I'm wondering what, um, kind of revenue it brings into local businesses. Um, you know, have you ever had that conversation with Adam? People, people come here, they, they, they shop, they may go shopping, they may stop at a store, they may get gas, they may go eat someplace. Um, and, and you can't underestimate that either.
Hey, they're, they're good for the, uh, fast food business, I'd tell ya. You go down there on the weekend, and.
Well, Meyer and the fast food joints are making money, but again.
Making money hand over fist.
That's not educating a kid in this building, a- again, it, you know, that's, I think that's what everyone fails to go back to. Our job is to educate children K through twelve. And if you're taking money out of that general fund to do any of these things, you need to examine it. I, I, it, it, you know, it, it's, it would be nice if we could take a couple hundred thousand dollars and do whatever we wanted to do with it, but. It don't work like that, and, and when, you know, every year since I sat on this board, community ed has lost somewhere between. Forties and seventies, seventy-five so thousand dollars, that's a teacher. That's a teacher, you know, no, we ain't laying anyone off, but I mean, that, that's a problem, and, and that's the only thing that scares me with this, is. If you take this and you turn it into ano- just another form of community ed, you're, you're gonna be operating in the red. And more than what we already are. You know, I, I don't think, I think when Ben brings you the numbers back, I'll bet that seventy-eight thousand dollars doesn't operate that building. For the year, so, you know. It, it's one of those things, it, yeah, those things are all great, they make everyone warm and fuzzy, but. It's not your job, your job's to educate kids.
So, you'll get us an estimate, right?
Yep.
Talk, I think we can talk about how, how we could, um, solicit feedback.
Yeah, we'll try and put a financial analysis together for the next meeting.
Okay.
Good.
Good.
Yeah, good luck.
Uh, we are now on to the superintendent evaluation process discussion.
So, I just wanted to, uh, you know, just while we're still in open session, just because some people might wonder why we're not in a closed session. I've requested to go into closed session for my evaluation. Um, my evaluation by my contract has to be completed by December thirty-first each year. Um, basically, uh, I'm evaluated on a system that was put in place by Collins and Blaha, attorney firm out of McComb County. Um, there are six core competencies or components to my evaluation. Visionary leadership, policy and governance, instructional leadership, communication and community relations. Organizational management, and professionalism and ethics. Um, I will also have a component of my evaluation, uh, which is based on student achievement data. And so, my, um, twenty-five percent of my evaluation to forty percent of my evaluation will be based upon student growth data. Um, which is the same, uh, measures that we use for teachers and principals. Um, we also will, um, perform the, while we perform our evaluation in closed session. Um, certainly, my evaluation scores and ratings will be public record and part of a public file for anyone that would need to see that. Um, but I just wanted to make sure everybody kinda knew that. Um, and of course, on the specifics of the evaluation process, most everybody's been through it. Um, I know there might be some questions Jessica might have, when we go into closed session, I can do that. But I just wanted to kinda make that statement, so people knew, um, that we were going into closed session to perform the, the actual evaluation itself.
And you have provided us with your assessment of your performance in advance, so everybody has had an opportunity if they chose to look at it.
Correct.
Okay, any questions for Ben?
Nope.
All right, we have public comments, and I am absent of public comments. It's been a while since we haven't had anybody in the audience.
Joanne, pretend, come on. No pressure.
Let the record show, we had no one present. Um, and then comments or questions from the board, anybody want to start?
Just for me, I just wanna thank the board for the time I've, uh, got to know all of you, I, I've, um, felt welcomed. Uh, felt like this has been a, a community of people who all have a vision for helping children. And each one of you are different, and that, I think that's what make this board so powerful. I really appreciate the friendships I've made, I know it's been a short term and a short time, but, um, I've thoroughly enjoyed it. I have a whole new respect for serving on the board, I've served in other capacities, and this has really shown me that this is a selfless job. You really have to want to do this, to excel at it, and all of you seem to wanna do it. So, I really thank you for, um, your kind words, you, you've helped me, um, get to know, you know, Swartz Creek even better than I did before. And, uh, to you, Ben, and Carrie for, for helping me and, and guiding me through this process of coming onto the board, I really thank you. Getting to know you Ken, and, and, uh, Mike, and, uh, Brian, uh, Joanne, new for you as well too, so I know it's gonna be a. Uh, um, you getting used to the team as well, but, and Tony, thank you also for just, you know, really giving me, um, showing me a lot of kindness during this timeframe, so. I can't thank you enough, I wish you all the best and great success. Um, wish the best to, to Chuck and Alicia and their next role in the board to, to come in and really help you continue to grow Swartz Creek School, so. Thank you so much, thank the community for those that did, you know, support me and my campaign, I thank them as well too, go Creek.
I, I got a question from Tony. Yeah, I'm going back to the cage. Because Ben talks so much, and. I, I need some help. Do you have any strong feelings, one way or the other?
I, I think the question we need to ask ourselves is, if we're not allowing the cage to be available to our students, then we need to really think about, is there a capacity issue? There's no capacity issue, then we should be able to open up to use it for whatever else we can use it for. Even after we pay for it, it's still gonna be ours, we'll still have those same problems, we just won't have a, a note every month. So, maybe that note turns into revenue that we can use, or money we can use to pay someone to run it, so, I really, the first thing to do is figure out, do we need to use it? And do we have the capacity to run it? Then from there, then, we already own it, so, decide if we need it, and if we need it, make sure we have enough, um, people to run it.
I'm gonna go next, since Tony went. Hey, it's been a pleasure. Um, Jessica, Tony, even Mike, you guys haven't been able to live the entire dream, uh, that we've lived. Um, but I, 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 I've enjoyed the time I spent with you guys. Tony, we do a lot of talking at the gym, and, and Jessica, one night, me and you stood outside and spoke, and, and. I left here thinking you'll be a very great asset of the board, because you, you took the time and. I'm sure you've talked to other people on the board, so, that was good that you were willing to talk and listen to each of us, that, that, I thought, very positive of you. Um, and Tony, your stu- your stay's been short as well, but you know what, it, it, again, I, I like everything about you, except you went to Northern. Mike, Mike, it's been a pleasure, you, you and I have had some neat conversations, I think the two people here that I really wanna address. And I have made this comment to Jeff Hall, and I made this comment to Ben, I have witnesses. Carrie, I, I, by far, no offense to the rest of yous, okay, so don't throw anything at me. I've, besides maybe Brian Mitchell, I think you are by far probably the smartest person on this board. And you have more of my respect than you will ever dream that you ever had. Um, cuz I know I've been a pain in your hind end, but I've made.
Haven't always seen eye to eye.
Right, but I, I've made that comment to both Jeff Hall and Ben, I said, I said, that is a very smart woman, I said, she's smart enough that I said. She's intimidating, I said, cuz she doesn't always talk, and I said, I know there's a lot going on there. So, you impress me way more than you've ever thought you have, but you do. And Brian, you and I have been.
Long time.
Friends, coworkers, neighbors, um, and we bumped heads here, but you know what, I, you know. I always tell people, I said, I love Brian, I said, except when I'm sitting at the board table some nights. I said, I'd love to go down to the house, I love to go down to the house, talk to him, I go to lunch with him, I say, I work with him, I said, he's a hoot. I said, when we get to that boardroom, I said, oh my God, I said, I'd like to kill him sometimes, so. I know, I know, I know it is, I truly know it is. I, I mean, it's, it's been somewhere between a treat and a treatment. Um, so anyhow though, but I, I really wanna address you two, there's other people that are coming and going, I, I, um, I miss Lorraine. Uh, for more reasons than once, her and I, we did, we started knocking on doors together, Mike, and I, and, you know, I, I made two. Out of just that, uh, before we ever got elected, so I, I missed it, but it's. If nothing else, I have learned so much about the way schools operate. And I've gotten an education, not only from how schools operate, but from, from everyone on the board. And, uh, but, yeah, I, I know we've had some trying times, but, um. I've always said the same thing, I, I, I don't see eye to eye with yous, but. You guys both have, one, I have a kind of a friendship, and the other one, I have a tremendous amount of respect for. So, with that, I'm done, cuz Mike told me I talked too much.
Ken, I, I just wanna say thank you, thank you for being here, because it has been, you know, you've been. It's been that teeter totter thing, and you've been that, you know, oftentimes, I just sit back and go, my gosh. But, uh, it's been great having you here, and I'm gonna miss your presence. Tony, I, man, I, you know, I wish you could have, I could, I wish I could have worked with you for another four years. Cuz I think you, you know, just, you're just an exceptional person.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And I'm gonna miss you.
Thank you.
Ken, I'm doing sense across when you started. So, I've heard you chirping for ten years. But you know, a lot of your thoughts and opinions, when you said, think about it, makes sense. So.
Thanks.
Still be running things across you. Get a different perspective, cuz it helps a lot to hear it from a different side, I do appreciate that about you. Tony, I appreciate, I wish four more years.
Tony, I appreciate, I wish four more years would have been good.
Yeah, yeah.
Smart man.
Thank you, thank you.
I would say that, as well to piggyback off that, that it is nice to hear your thoughts and perspective. As a newcomer, I'm thinking about things, number one, I'm not knowing the history, and just seeing things or hearing things from a different way than what's going in my head, so thank you for that, Ken, and as well, your, your calmness and, um, and your thoughtfulness, even just talking about, um, the cage, I appreciate, you know, and you were wel- so welcoming and nice to me as the new kid on the block, so anyways, I just wish you both all the best.
Same to you, same to you, you'll be great, you'll be great.
Before I got on the board, you talked to my wife more than I did. And I couldn't figure that out.
You owe me money.
Until I got on the board, and then I, you know, I, I had to listen to you. But a lot of things you say are, you're, you're smart too, and you bring up a lot of points, and you have brought up a lot of points. I don't, I don't agree with all of them, and you're wrong on the cage. But I appreciate, I appreciate all the information that we've shared, and you are gonna be missed.
Thank you, Michael.
Tony, I wanna thank you, short term, but you've made a huge difference in this board.
Thank you, Carrie, thank you.
Your sense of calmness is always welcome, you're very thoughtful, um, you're very passionate, and I hope this isn't your last time on a board.
Thank you, I hope in that, oh, not either, I hope I can serve again in some other capacity.
Yeah, you, you've been wonderful, and I'll, I'll miss you, but I know our, our paths will cross, and Ken. You made me cry, which I knew I, I just, I wasn't gonna do that. You are much smarter than you give yourself credit for, and I have given a lot of thought to the things that, that you've said. Um, you always seem to bring up sometimes the opposite view, and it's not always a bad idea to consider that. Um, we haven't always seen eye to eye, but I do respect you as well. I even made you guys a cake.
It was very good, I didn't do the chocolate, but I did the other.
Not everybody gets a cake, so, I might wanna thank you, because this has been, we've, we've had a long road.
Yes, we have.
I mean, we could have written a book, um, it might even be a bestseller. And there's some days where I wish that some of our other board meetings were videotaped, but, um, you know, we could go back and watch. Uh, but we've come a long way, so I, I do thank you, thank you very much.
I left out one thing, um, and I, I have to excuse myself, because as I said when I voted for, I didn't vote for Ben, I said I voted for the devil I knew, not the devil I didn't. It made me one of my votes that I made a mistake, you've, you've done a wonderful job. You, you've, you've made this board work better together, you've made this district work better together, and you've settled contracts, you've, you've done a lot of different things, you've got a bond passed, and, and I mean, I give you all the credit in the world, you've done an amazing, amazing job, and, uh, I hope you stick around longer than I think you're going to, but I hope you stick around, because you're, you're good for this district, and, um, and the community, even though you don't live here, you're good for the community, and, uh, I forgot to address you, I apologize.
No, I appreciate that.
I probably left the most important one out.
No. Thank you.
And Joanne, thank you for just being you again, because I miss Joan, she was a hoot, and, and you, you've done a good job replacing her, thank you.
Thank you, yes, thank you, Joanne.
Anybody else? So, uh, we will wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas, whoever you celebrate. Um, good luck, Ken, I'm sure you'll be keeping an eye on us.
I'll drive a police car by your house or something.
Good luck, Tony, and to you and your families, and, uh, enjoy, rest, relax, recuperate, and we'll see you all again in January. All right, and we're going to go into closed sessions, I need a motion.
Salute.
Support.
We need to do a roll call vote.
Questions, none, I need a roll call, please, okay?
Um, Brian?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Tony Jones?
Yes.
And, yes. Seven, yes.
Okay, we will be going into closed sessions for superintendent student, uh, student evaluation. Superintendent evaluation, we're in the OMA fifteen point two-six-eight, uh, section eight A. Um, can we take like a?
Five minute break, yeah.
All right, thanks.
Student email.
Student email.
Student email, here we go.
It's all the same. Yep. You need my signature with the full one on it, right?
Yes.